Ready?
Yep.
I'd like to call the March 21st Board of Selectmen's meeting to order at 6:30. At this time, I'd like to welcome Paul O'Brien to the board. Glad that he won and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay, Mr. Owen, do we have a need for a non-public session?
Yes, Madam Chairman, we have matters of real estate and personnel.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, minutes for the March 7th Board of Selectmen's meeting. Do any board members have any changes or corrections? And of course, I do. On page six, I'm looking at fifth paragraph from the top, fifth sentence, fourth sentence. It says, "Mrs. Murray suggested email information," and I'd like added to "all the candidates running for selectmen," emailing all the information to all the candidates running for selection, just that is what needs to be added there. And then on page seven, fifth paragraph down, and it starts the second sentence. "She attended the planning board forum," and we should scratch out "meeting on," and then "forum" on the master plan. That's all I have are those two. Does anybody else have any others? Can I have a motion to accept as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, we're going to head on to our public hearings. First one, temporary event permit. I'd like to open up that public hearing. It's going to be families in transition to hold the 5K run-walk on September 9th, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Abenaki Ski Area. Would you state your name for the record?
Good evening, my name is Lauren Bombardier. I am here for Families in Transition, I'm the Events and Fundraising Manager. Do you want me to talk about the event?
Yes. Love to.
So, I'm here to ask for your permission for permit for our second annual Wicked Fit Run. This year, the race is taking place on Saturday, September 29th. The event will be held at the Abenaki Ski Area, and we are partnering with the Wolfboro Fall Festival again this year. We have four dedicated local residents who serve on our event task force, and the Wicked Fit Run is a fundraiser for the soon-to-open Hope House. Last year, the event raised $13,000, which will provide the necessary funding for the Hope House. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Hope House, the Hope House will provide temporary, safe, and secure shelter, housing for families in need of assistance in the lakes region of Carroll County. And we will offer services and housing to seven families at one time, totaling and anticipating 43 parents and 84 children per year, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this event, this permit? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments, questions? Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to families in transition to hold a 5K run-walk on September 29th, 2018.
Second.
7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Abenaki Ski Area.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have your permit.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the next event, next public hearing, is going to be the New England Lyman Boat to Hold a Boat Show on June 9th, 2018, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Three Town Docks Community Bandstand, two parking spaces adjacent to the bandstand. Do I have somebody who'd like to speak to this? You state your name for the record.
Good evening, I'm Joe Webb. I'm here representing our New England Lyman Boat Owners Group. This will be our 19th boat show at the Town Docks. And we had maybe about 20, 25 boats, and we requested three docks. We're leaving one dock completely open, and we leave the dock by the ramp open. And if we don't get many boats, we open the other docks up to the public. So, we try to be very cautious of that. And we check all the boats for milfoil, both in and out. And we, you know, we pick up and close up, and it's, we average about 25 boats, and it's open not only for Lyman boats, but any lap-streak type boat like a Pen Yen. And so, we get boats from all over New England, Vermont, New Hampshire. And it's just a very small show. And is there any questions I missed here?
No, I think that sounds good. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. There is a note on the form, the chief is asking that we approve this with the condition you hire two detailed officers. So you'll need to get in touch with the police department and find out exactly what they're looking for. Does anybody else on the board have any questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, move that we approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the New England Lyman Group to hold a boat show in August. I'm in June 9th, 2018, 2:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m. at Three Town Docks, Community Bandstand, and two parking spaces adjacent to the bandstand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I'll open up the next public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Area Children's Center to hold the Fairyland Festival on July 7th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., rain date July 8th, 2018, at Kate Park, Town Park, and the Community Bandstand. Do I have somebody who'd like to speak to this event? State your name for the record.
Sandy Johnson. This is the eighth, the eighth or ninth year, we've not quite decided, for the Fairyland Festival to be held in July. It's mainly a community event for the Children's Center. It's, people build little fairy houses, and we have the public coming, and we have dancers, and the rain date is July 8th.
Okay. Do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members? Okay, I am going to not vote on this, I'm going to abstain, I'm on the board of the Children's Center. So, do I have a motion?
I'd move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Area Children's Center to hold the Fairyland Festival on July 7th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., rain date July 8th, at Kate Park, Town Park, and the Wolfboro Community Bandstand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. Got your permit. All right, I'll open up the next public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to hold Wolfboro Area Open House on May 19th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at various locations. And Mary has laryngitis, are you going to try, or should I have Dave Owen? Okay, Dave Owen will be the voice for Mary DeBries. Dave?
I'm Mary DeBries this evening. So the information here on the Wolfboro Area Open House is going to be held on Saturday, May 19th, Wolfboro's first-ever community-wide open house. Individual businesses will decide how they want to welcome people to the open house. Open house will feature Wolfboro's paddle, paddle. People will be given a map for a self-guided tour, searching for a boat paddle, and a variety of businesses. They're going to be giving out chamber dollars that can be spent at cash at any Chamber of Commerce member business, and that sort of summarizes it, I think.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to hold Wolfboro Area Open House on May 19th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at various locations.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that permit is granted. We'll go to the next public hearing, and I'll open that. It's the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to hold Sidewalk Sale Days on August 24th and 25th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m.
Moonlight Madness next? Is the Moonlight Madness one next?
Oh, I guess I did. I went, thank you, I did check it too soon.
Thank you.
We'll back up. The Wolfboro, this one is the Wolfboro Area Children's Center to hold the annual Moonlight Madness on June 15th, 2018, from 5:00 a.m., 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Railroad, Central, Main Center Streets, Town and Kate Park, Wolfboro Community Bandstand, and Dockside Egress. Dave Owen, you want to help Mary out again?
Yes, the Chamber of Commerce will hold Moonlight Madness on Friday, June 15th. It will be presented as it has in previous years. Moonlight Madness is intended to keep area residents thinking about staying and doing business in Wolfboro during the summer, and to attract visitors to the community.
Okay. Do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to that event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, do you have any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor permit for the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to hold the annual Moonlight Madness on June 15th, 2018, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Railroad and Central Avenues, Main and Center Streets, Town and Kate Park, and Wolfboro Community Bandstand, and Dockside Egress.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll open up the next public hearing, and we'll go do those Sidewalk Sale Days again. The Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to hold Sidewalk Sale Days on August 24th and 25th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Main and Center Street, Railroad and Central Ave., and Dockside Egress and Ingress. What? Dave, you're on again.
I am. Sidewalk Sale Days will be on Friday and Saturday, August 24th and 25th this year. It will be presented in the same fashion it has been in previous years, and Sidewalk Sale Days is an opportunity for residents and visitors to enjoy special deals while shopping in a festive atmosphere.
Do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to that event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to hold Sidewalk Sale Days on August 24th and 25th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Main and Center Streets, Railroad and Central Avenues, and Dockside Egress and Ingress.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that permit is issued. The next one is the Wolfboro Area Chil, area, Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to hold Christmas in Wolfboro on November 24th through December 24th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at various locations. Dave?
Yes, Christmas in Wolfboro is a month-long series of activities that will be presented in the same fashion that they have previous years. This event supports our local businesses and our year-round economy. And the police chief has already signed the parade application for the Christmas parade.
Okay. Do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments? Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to hold Christmas in Wolfboro on November 24th through December 24th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at various locations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You have all your permits. Thank you, Dave, for helping Mary out, she's thanking you at this point. All right. I'd like to open up the next public hearing. It's the Governor Wentworth Regional High School Kingswood Cross Country and Track Team to hold the 19th Annual Muddy Moose Trail Race on April 22nd, 2018, set up on April 21st, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., starting and ending at the Kingswood Regional High School. You state your name for the record.
My name is Fergus Cullen. This is the 19th annual event. This will be my 15th year as the event director. There have been no changes from the past several years.
Okay, thank you. It's a fun event, I'm sure. Anybody in the audience have any comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members? Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Governor Wentworth Regional High School Kingswood Cross Country and Track Team to hold the 19th Annual Muddy Moose Trail Race on April 22nd, 2018, heran set up on April 21st, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., starting and ending at Kingswood Regional High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you have your permit. Enjoy the mud. All right, I'm going to open up the last special event public hearing. It's for All Saints Episcopal Church to hold the circus from August 11th through 14th, 2018. Shows to start on August 20th, August 12th, at 2:00 p.m., and at 7:00 p.m., and August 13th, 1:00 p.m., and at 6:00 p.m. at the NIC. You just state your names.
My name is Donald Holm, and this is Carolyn Sunquist. I am the senior warden at All Saints Church, and Carolyn and I are the co-chairs for this event.
You want to kind of explain it? It's something new, and it's very exciting, and give people an opportunity to hear about it.
Okay. The name of the, we are the presenters. The circus is called Circus Schmercus. It is a circus with no animals. All the performers are from 11 to eight, or 10 to 18 years old. They come from all over the country and Canada. They do acrobatics, they do clowns, all sorts of stuff. It's designed to definitely appeal to families, and that is why we decided to sponsor this. It's going to be four performances on August 13th and, 12th and 13th. And the whole thing, the idea is to provide an event for families in the town, because there's been much discussion about the lack of that sort of thing. And we will be providing through various sources, I hate to say a scholarship, but free admission, for people that can't afford it, primarily kids that can't afford it. The site is the NIC. The NIC is very enthusiastic about this, and they will be a source of people, kids that need free tickets, as well as the Children's Center, and the school social workers will be helping us with that. So that's basically it.
Well, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I did notice that when I went through the packet, that your insurance runs out on 4:30, 2018. Soon as you get the new rider, just give it to us, that would be great. Board members, do you have any other comments?
Just the comment that the fire rescue put on there about the tent-assembly permit being required and everything there, so, looks like there's a lot of details in there about that, so.
I couldn't understand.
There's a comment about, from our fire rescue, about tent and assembly permit. You know, the criteria that the tent meets with fire and all that kind of stuff, so, yeah.
Oh, yes, they're very detailed in here.
Yeah.
Overwhelmingly, but, yes.
I would just get ahold of the fire chief and make sure that you have everything here that's down and that, so you know that you have all the things you need, and there must be something in terms of the number, in terms of a permit for assembly, I think is the other thing that's here.
Okay.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to All Saints Episcopal Church to hold the circus from August 11th to 14th, 2018, with shows to start on August 12th at 2:00 p.m., and 7:00 p.m. on August 13th, 1:00 p.m., and 2:00 p.m. at the NIC, or 6:00 p.m. at the NIC.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? You have your permit.
Thank you very much.
It's like an exciting time.
Yes.
It's going to be great fun.
You all come.
I'm going to open up the next public hearing. This is a public hearing on alcoholic beverage is in the Great Hall, and I'm going to read the notice. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 21st, 2018, at 6:35 p.m. at the Wolfboro Town Hall Great Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, to discuss the application of the Wentworth Watershed Association for a permit for the sale and consumption of beer and wine at a free landscape in the watershed workshop on April 5th, 2018, from 4:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Great Hall pursuant to the Town Code, Chapter 5, alcoholic beverages. This notice was posted on March 12th. Do I have anybody here who'd like to speak to this? Come to the mic and state your name.
Everybody have a poster? My name's Ann Blodgett, and I am president of the board of the Wentworth Watershed Association. As you know, phosphorus and stormwater runoff are extremely detrimental to our lakes, which are economic drivers of our area. So we've felt for a long time, through feedback at the Water Summit and other events, that educating right to the source, that landscapers need to know more. So we're doing what's called a quick and dirty, which is a two-hour session, which condenses the two-day session that many of them don't go to. So to further entice them, we're serving local beer in very small glasses, and food to go with it, and probably some coffee. So we want homeowners, landscapers, arborists, irrigation specialists, excavators, anybody in that kind of line of business, to help raise the awareness of how to manage stormwater runoff.
Does anybody in the audience like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I think this is a great service that the Lake, the Wentworth Watershed Association does. I went to the Water Summit, which was well-attended, and this is another way to deal with that runoff, and I'm very busy at Back Bay dealing with milfoil, and getting rid of some of these chemicals will help us keep down the growth of milfoil in Back Bay.
Thank you, Linda, and the Water Summit will be on May 12th this year, so we're doing Water Summit 2 on May 12th. We will not be serving alcohol in the morning that day, but we will be serving food, and we had about 200 people last year, and we hope for more in this very hall. Thank you, and thank you to all the sponsors locally who've helped us in all these events.
Selectmen, are there any comments, questions about this? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor permit, on the wrong one here, permit to the Wentworth Watershed Association for serving and consuming beer in the Great Hall at Town Hall at their Free Landscaping in the Watershed Workshop event on April 5th, 2018, from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. in accordance with the Town Code, Chapter 5, alcoholic beverages.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one's opposed? You have, granted your permit.
Thank you.
I am going to open up the next public hearing, and I'm also going to read the notice. Public hearing notice, the town of Wolfboro. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing pursuant to RSA 3192 and RSA 231 colon 11 on March 21st, 2018, at 6:35 p.m. at the Town Hall Great Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, for the purpose of determining the necessity or occasion for the taking of a proximate, and this reads, "six acre parcel of land located in Tuftonborough adjacent to the town's rapid infiltration basin site." It was, ad went in the Granite State News on February 15th, and it was also posted at the Wolfboro Town Hall and the Wolfboro Library. Mr. Ford?
Thank you. Dave Ford, Director of Public Works, and my favorite project, the Rapid Infiltration Basin. As, we are going to give you a real brief history and where, how we got to this point. In 2008, the town purchased 35-plus acres from the Witten Family Trust for the purpose of solving a long-term effluent disposal problem. And for those who are not aware, we have a very highly-treated effluent. It's the tertiary-treated, and it goes into a storage pond, and from that pond, it sprayed into the woods, and is also pumped up to the Rapid Infiltration Basin site. At the time this was started, we were to believe this would give us a long-term solution. Shortly after it started, we had some serious problems with regards to the water that goes in the ground, fine, got treated, fine, but it came out and broke out into wetland areas and created problems. You know, fast forward, we've had our issues with an engineer, those were resolved in the court. The town has received a significant amount of money, which we've invested almost $2 million now, going back and studying the problem and testing out the solution. We believe now with our latest dismissal to the New Hampshire DES in December of 2017, that we have the long-term solution. But during this process, some of the groundwater that had seeped out went across the town property onto the Witten Family Trust property, which crossed the town line. That was always shown as a western discharge area in our permitting and in our original negotiations with the Witten Family Trust. They knew what we were using the property for. We did not expect what happened. These were unexpected issues, and we are totally committed to the responsibility to repair those, to assure that it doesn't happen, to maintain it going forward. So again, this site, when I originally looked at it, I had, did an approximation of about five acres. Since that time, we've contracted with White Mountain Survey Company, and they went out and surveyed the parcel, and it came out a little different first. Originally, we thought it was going to be five acres, and it went to seven acres, but when I talked to Jim Ryanes today, I think the accurate is six acres, which is the plan you have. However, this is still a conceptual plan. We need to mark it out in the field. We plan on doing that, blazing the lines, showing exactly where it is, so that the Witten Family Trust knows where it is. It should also be noted that we have been in negotiations with the trust for some time now. I think we've made some very generous offers and tried to resolve this, and we're still hopeful that that might happen. But we do believe that we are responsible to fix this problem, and we feel it's best that this property be under our ownership. So the area does include a little bit of a buffer around the exact problems, but it includes areas where we need to put in these groundwater infiltration trenches, and possibly engineered natural solutions to get the water back in the ground, and also to restore these areas that have been damaged, and then to maintain, to make sure that in five, 10 years or anything else happens, we'll be responsible for. So that's the land we're requesting to purchase, but if we can't reach a fair price, then we suggest the eminent domain. So with that, I think of, I'd be more than happy, and I have drawings, see if anyone wants more detailed questions, or want any better explanation of what's going on.
Yeah, and what I'll do is I'll open it up in case there's somebody who'd like to speak to it, and then we can bring you back to answer any questions. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this? Come on up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name's Chip Alby, I'm the Selectman in Tuftonborough. I guess this is causing more questions than answers, but I'm not clear from Dave Ford's testimony what the public purpose is, which is what you need to establish before you can start any sort of eminent domain proceeding. There isn't a five acre or a six acre There isn't a five-acre or a six-acre or a seven-acre lot in the area that you're looking at. There's a 90-plus acre lot. So the first step is going to have to be for the landowner to go through a subdivision process. At that point, you're looking to change the use of the property from low-density residential to industrial. So now we need to go to the ZBA for some sort of variance. I don't know that our Conservation Commission has been totally informed of the spill. So I'm not certain whether or not I can speak to whether or not you could just clean this up and leave it in Tuftonborough, or whether or not you need to own the land. I don't think you're, I honestly don't know whether you're using the injection wells currently, but I would think that some discussion should be made to go east as opposed to north, and keep your injection wells and your process within the town of Wolfboro. I think you're going to run into some issues with regard to eminent domain in another town if your intention is to change the boundaries of Wolfboro. You're going to need to get some sort of enactment by the legislature to do that, and we're certainly, I mean, one of my jobs, and one of your jobs, obviously, is to maintain the boundaries and the sovereignty of the town. So if you're not going to change the boundary, take this into Wolfboro, and you're going to leave it in Tuftonborough, now we've got to talk about taxation on an industrial site. And we can talk about whether or not you're a taxable entity or not. From our perspective, you'd have to be, because you're not a government entity in Tuftonborough. So there's all sorts of questions that need to be answered before this process goes through. And I think it would have been, I mean, it was nice of Mr. Owen to give us a shout and tell us you were going to have this, and he put the notice in the paper, but the affected parties are in fact the selectmen and the body of politic in Tuftonborough. So I think we need to have some discussions before you start down this road and maybe get into some extensive explanation as to why you think you need to own it. Are you going to be expanding your infiltration into Tuftonborough? Now we're going to have to look at the effect on the 19-Mile Brook watershed and the affected landowners and the lake that's beyond that. So I think, I think this has created more questions than it's actually answered for me as a selectman, and hopefully we can remain friends.
I can answer one question. Yes, your Conservation Commission did know about this when it first went in. They met with us, your selectmen met with us. The reason we have-
We met with, the selectmen met with you when you first started your infiltration.
Right, yes, yes. And so did the Conservation Commission, and when this whole process and when we got permitted, we had this unexpected issue, and it came out of the ground over on this property. And it was nothing that Wolfboro was expecting to have happen. We're trying to be, as Dave Owen said, good, I mean, Dave Ford said, good stewards. We need to keep on maintaining this, and it seemed like, and we're going to need to put different pipes in, and I think our pilot has, we're going to do some changing of that in order to meet a administrative order by consent by the state of New Hampshire DES. And with this, I'm going to let Dave Ford-
Well, just to clarify one thing there. I appreciate that we were notified and we were party when the process started. From spill forward, we've been less than informed. And whether or not you need to own the property is not in the decree that DES sent you. You need to control the property.
I've walked at property after the spill with the Conservation Commission from Tuftonborough, and I believe there were some selectmen at that time. So we have, they have seen it. We've talked extensively.
That aside, going forward, all of these questions that I've raised this evening need to be answered before you try an eminent domain proceeding in Tuftonborough, from our perspective. Thanks.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to talk? Okay. Suzanne? You've got to go up to the, I'm going to send him up to speak afterwards. If you have a question, I'm going to let Mr. Ford then answer all the questions that have come up at once.
Suzanne Ryan. Could you legally or technically explain what the agenda says, the necessity or occasion for taking an approximately five acres? What has your counsel advised you about this wording? I am familiar with the wording for laying out of a road as an occasion, but it's not going to be a road, so do you have any literature that you can-
We have had legal counsel and the motion-
Can you tell the public what that is?
Well, that we can go forward with this, and we will be having a motion that will, which was laid out by town council in order for us to do it.
That doesn't answer the question.
Mr. Owen?
It's the language in the statute. It's parroting the language in the RSA, so that's where that language comes from.
Well, can you tell us what that means? I have a word here. Take, taking or the occasion?
The necessity or-
Have you got the statute there? Can you read it?
I don't have, I didn't bring copies of the statutes, so I'm not in a journey.
We'll provide you with the statute.
Well, it isn't just me. The public doesn't, the public, this is on your agenda, the public is listening, the newspaper's here, I don't know, though they know exactly what that means. And I hear the word eminent domain.
That's correct. This is a, this is a step-
So is that what it really means?
This is one, the first step in taking a piece of property by eminent domain. We have to decide that there is the necessity and the occasion for us to take it for a public purpose. And that's what we'll be, after hearing Mr. Ford and everything tonight, going to need to decide as a board.
Okay, so the agenda just could have said that slash eminent domain, and it would have been clear. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ford, would you like to address some of the comments and explain it maybe a little better?
I would. If you could sit there, and then I can have the camera, you can see the map as I'm trying to explain. So the first question you ask is, what is a necessity? Why do we have to do this? And then you ask another question, why can't we move it somewhere else? And those are really good questions, so, but a lot of due is- And hopefully that we can see this on the camera, as well as you can see it.
They, they-
He says it's okay.
Can you get chat?
He's got it?
So to get everyone familiar, this is the town line, and this-
David, why don't you show it to the camera? We all know that we-
He's got it on this camera.
Okay, sorry.
So the town line is that line going down, and 19-Mile Brook is here. The original purchase of the 35-plus acres was that piece there. Why, the RIBs were installed at the top of the hill. Based on the information we had at the time we permitted with DES and in our discussions with the Witten Family Trust, the water was going to go in the ground and then emerge through the wetland areas, which was known as the Western, the Central, and the Eastern. So under, from the DES, from the discussions with the town of Tuftonborough, because we made presentations there prior to the, during this process and during the initial startup, it was always clear this was the purpose. And the reason the water flows that way is underground is the ledge, so we can't make the water go opposite. Gravity's going that way, it's going down the brook. It also is, the good soil's up here where we get the treatment. We have 65 feet of unsaturated sand, which gives it the additional treatment as the water's going down. And when you say spill, that's a wrong term to be used. It's not spill. There's no contaminated wastewater. This is highly-treated effluent, being treated again, it's in the ground, it's breaking out. And our violation is, when it breaks out on these steep slopes, the wetland can't hold that quantity of water, so small streams are developing, which creates erosion, there's sinkholes, and there's sediment moving down to these points. So, so what we need to do is, is that the problem is not so much the quality of the water, it's the water breaking out of the slope is creating degradation of the wetlands. And it's a violation of the groundwater permit to have a surface water discharge through that way. So what we need to do is to get the water, collect the water above before it breaks out, so we take the pressure off the wetlands, and then get it back into the brook where it was originally attended. The work we've done over the last two years, we've exhausted all our other options to find out how else we can take care of our solution for 50 years. And we've looked at many options, as well as taking a pipe across the lake, looking at buying additional properties, you name it, we've looked at it. But by far, the most, and the best solution is to fix this site. And when we say fix, we're going to, the water's breaking out onto the Witten Family Trust property in Tuftonborough, it's right here. We're going to put interceptor traps above it, interceptor trenches, collect the groundwater, and then reintroduce it back in the brook on the, along the brookside through what we call these ENS systems. The reason we want to, we think we need to own this, and we did talk to the Witten Family Trust about a lease. They preferred that we buy it. So they were in agreement, we've been negotiating with them about the purchase of this, and we just haven't been able to agree on the price. And again, originally, I estimated at five acres, it's a little more, six acres. But the reason is, we cannot be sure, because it's in the groundwater, as much as we're trying, trial and error, making, you know, trying to be exact, that this solution is going to be, it'll continue to work. So we want to be there to maintain it, we want to be there on a weekly, monthly basis. We'll be, after the system goes in, we'll be monitoring, maintaining it. We also need to restore the wetlands that have been damaged. And again, because it's a groundwater system, we feel we need to own it for them going forward, because, again, it does have trace elements of the wastewater, and therefore we want, and it's a groundwater permit, so we feel better that we can control the issue. So that's the issue of necessity, why we need to have it, and why we can't move it. It's just a matter of the science and how much money we have invested in this. Again, this still is, again, a good, long-term solution, and it's something that DES has been along with this. And I've met with the selectmen, prior to you being a selectman, onsite on numerous occasions, and the Conservation Commission. I met with them, and I've been open to say, hey, I'm more than happy to set up another meeting with you to go over this in detail. I've not got any response, I haven't talked to you, but Lloyd Wood, I said I'd come in and discuss it, and the Conservation Commission again, so I'm more than happy to sit down with anyone, and I've always said that at all our public meetings. If anyone ever wanted to have questions about this, more than happy. So again, that's why we think it's necessary. Could I ask a question?
Sure. He can come up to the microphone, just so I ask you to get back into the microphone.
Do these exist?
Those wells existed, yes. We got permission to install those wells.
If you could come, because the-
I'll repeat the question, I'll repeat it.
All you have to do is take the, or you want to repeat the question?
Yeah.
Okay, David will repeat the question.
The question was, they're shown as wells. Those are not operating wells. Those were test wells to determine the soil profile, and so those aren't being actively used now. The water all goes in the ground in Wolfboro, and those wells are no longer active. They're just there, they were installed and never removed. I'll go on, and if you have more questions, I'll be more than happy. We are looking at a boundary line adjustment, so that we would, again, it's not unusual to own land in other towns, so we're looking at not subdividing, but doing a boundary line adjustment under our counsel from our attorney. Again, it's not a spill, it's a breakout, so it doesn't sound like, again, some people get nervous, we think wastewater, that somehow this is untreated wastewater that's breaking. It's not the case. This is highly-treated effluent, that in most communities, it goes right into the river, it's not a problem. In fact, we won an award two years ago for one of the best treatment plants in the state. So again, the quality is there, it's really about trying to stop the erosion and trying to stop the problems in the wetlands. We talked about the permitting and the subdivision, so we are aware of that, so we know that once we reach agreement with the trust, that we were going to come to the board, the planning board, and discuss that, whatever we need to do to get that. And the question about taxable, I don't, I don't know if that came up or not, but I'm sure if, whatever the tax rate was, would be-
I think that's something we've got to ask town council.
Right.
I mean, I don't have that answer.
And again, we want, we really would like to resolve our issue without the eminent domain, so that we can have a purchase. And again, that's not, it's our last choice, and hopefully we can continue to negotiate with the trust and get to a fair price, because we think that's the best way to do it. But on the other hand, we have to be fair to our taxpayers, because this is being paid for by the taxpayers. It's a very expensive project, and we want to make sure that we are being fair, but not being overly generous. I think, now, do you have any other questions? I kind of was trying to write them down. Is there anything else I might not have touched upon?
No, you dealt with the subdivision in the ZBA, you dealt with the Conservation Commission, which is what I had, and that we had met with the select board on a number of occasions, so those are the ones I broke down, so you covered them.
My understanding is that the public purpose is to have some sort of action to, whatever the restoration.
No, the public purpose is for the long-term use as a groundwater discharge zone, so that part of our effluent is heading to 19-Mile Brook. It travels underground, and we want to keep it in the ground, we want to keep it safe, we want to keep it permit compliant, but the need is because it's our long-term treated effluent disposal discharge area.
And we have to maintain it. We're going to have to be on there, we're going to put physical pipes in there, and that's why we feel we-
There'll be monitoring equipment, there'll be, you know, reports, and I have reports over the last seven years, you can see, and have I made things available to the selectmen and to the Conservation Commission. He's, okay, now he can't hear you. So he was asking about saying that the town tests 19-Mile Brook for water quality. When's your coming for your, ask the question?
I guess even though I have a lot to say, I'm only one selectman, so I'm not going to make any decisions for you tonight. But I think we need to get to a comfort level. If your previous plant failed, you're, we were guaranteed that it was going to operate fine, and then it failed. Now we're building a new one, which obviously has similar guarantees, and you're expanding into Tuftonborough. What happens if that fails? Where are we? What if it works, but the population and the use in Wolfboro expands? Is it your feeling that you can expand further into Tuftonborough? So we need to get to some sort of comfort level, I think, between the two towns, before we get too far down the road. I think we need to figure out what, from your engineers, their expectation is for further expansion, because I know you had a moratorium, I think, on a new subject-
That was in two-
Connections.
That was in 2006, when this whole thing started. And we've got, we got permitted from DES, we will get permitted again from DES, who deals with the quality. And if we expand, this, we have a sewer treatment plant that only can take a certain amount of effluent. Am I correct, Mr. Ford?
Sure. Part of the work the DES did, so there's quite a bit of technical work that's been done, and again, it's been made available to different people in Tuftonborough, but it's online also. We have, I've looked at the long-term use over a 50-year period, and we are working hard to reduce our infiltration into our sewer system. A lot of the water that we have to treat and dispose of is actually groundwater into our system. So part of the administrative order is to study and to eliminate that INI, we appropriated 50,000, and next year, we're going to be doing another big project for INI removal. So we don't, over the next 20-year period, we do not see a significant increase. So the permit we're getting now is going to be less than it was permitted for originally. It was originally permitted for 600,000. We're now going for a permit in the area of about 340, almost half of what we originally permitted for. And we still believe that will be our long-term solution. We are going to keep our spray areas in reserve as a backup. So again, we don't see us expanding or asking for any more, we're asking for less, and what we're saying is that the groundwater discharge zone, which always was shown to go into Tuftonborough, is that we can make sure that it can be properly fixed, restored, and then maintained going forward for the life of the project.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming. Alrighty. Does anybody else in the audience have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Board, our task is to decide whether there is a necessity or occasion, and I think Mr. Ford has done that by talking about the need for us to be able to maintain and to do the solution on that parcel of land. So does anybody have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I make a motion based upon the evidence at the public hearing, there is a necessity or occasion for the taking of the six-acre parcel, shown as Area A on the conceptual plan of boundary line adjustment involving the land of Gene P. Witten, 1999 Trust, James Stockman, trustee, and the town of Wolfboro, by White Mountain Survey and Engineering, Inc., dated March 21st, 2018.
And I'll second that. Does any board members have any comments or questions? Hearing none. Hearing none. Do I have all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, okay, that motion passes. I, there is another motion, Mr. Harriman, would you like to do that one, too?
I also make a motion that the selectmen proceed to assess the damages sustained by the owner of the approximately six-acre parcel in accordance with RSA 231:15, and take all of the steps necessary to acquire said parcel by eminent domain.
I'll second that. Board members, do you have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. And I hope you go online and take a look at what's there, and I'm sure Mr. Ford will be more than willing to meet with you or your fellow selectmen, and yes, we can start getting a dialogue going, and I think that makes sense. So thank you for coming. Alrighty, let's see where we are now. That takes care of all our public, that takes care of all our public hearings today. We have an appointment. Mr. Owen, will you do that one for us?
Yes, we have the appointment of the Parks and Rec Director, Christine Collins, to the Emergency Operations Planning Committee. She was not originally named to that committee when we reestablished the committee a month or two ago, and it was pointed out at the first meeting that it would probably be a good thing to have the Parks and Rec Director involved in that process also.
I know, I need to go back to the bulk vote, so can I have a motion to appoint Christine Collins?
I move that we approve the appointment of Parks and Recreation Director Christine Collins to the Emergency Operations Planning Committee.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. We need to go back to the bulk vote. Does anybody have any need to remove anything from the bulk vote? Hearing none. I'll make a motion to accept the bulk vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay. Number six, new business, monthly budget expenditures and revenue report, Peter?
Good evening, Pete Chamberlain, Finance Director. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read my report. I would note that I included a brief report from DPW Director Ford about the status of the winter budget, and that was at the time, and since then, we've had a couple more storms, which isn't really helping things, so at some point here in the fairly near future, we'll be discussing about how to offset those costs, as we usually do.
Okay.
Were there any questions about the budget report itself?
Yeah, I did, and I noticed this, and it may be something that'll get changed when the auditors come, but the health insurance is running at about 24.727, and the dental, and it's, that's going to need to be his-
That, no, that's because there were, we actually, and I didn't realize it, we paid March's bill on the 28th of February.
Oh, okay.
A little bit ahead of schedule. I try to keep those in the months they're due, so I didn't realize that. I looked back at a couple of accounts, and there were three payments in there, so.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering, because it was just out of whack with everything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Does anybody else have any question on the budget report? Okay.
Any, and in, we seem to be doing fairly well, although it's still fairly early in the revenues, so. In March, I will be, in March, I will have the allocations for the first quarter done also.
Good.
So that will help a lot with regard to numbers, so.
Any board members, any questions? Nope. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Pleasant Valley Road Bridge over Heath Brook, Mr. Ford?
The Pleasant Valley Bridge was a project that we had applied to New Hampshire DOT for the Bridge Aid Grant, and we were put in line, pushed back to 2026, but under guidance from our consultants, and I think in our discussions with the selectmen, I said our bridge was not going to last that long, and I think we needed to go forward with the design with the hope that maybe we could move up if we were prepared to go. A lot of towns get in line, but they don't do the engineering, they don't appropriate the money, so other projects can move forward. So a couple of years ago, we appropriated the money for the engineering study and the permitting, and I think it was 2016, we appropriated $140,000. With that, we were able to get the permitting and the design, and the design was submitted and approved by DOT, but I didn't find out until just recently that we got moved up the list, with the state putting additional money into the bridge funds, with the leftover money they had last year, they were able to juggle schedules, and projects that were ready to move were able to get moved up the ladder. So I did talk to, or communicated with Nancy Mayville, that because we missed our appropriation, could we stay in the loop for 2019, and they did say so, so we got the letter from them. So that's good news. I just thought it's important that the selectmen are aware of it, and we make sure we're ready to go forward with this as a big project in 2019. It'll probably be around a million dollars. I am proposing to bid the job out in the fall, so that we have a solid number, because there is a question about contingencies, the consultants are very nervous about pricing now, that the economy, if it starts to take off, construction prices may shoot up. DOT is very nervous, too, because they're trying to make the limited funds go, so they're trying to cap us, but I think this is all good news, and I just wanted to make everyone aware, it is 80% funded by the state, so if it's a million-dollar project, the town is only going to have to bond 200,000. So it's a really good program, and we've used this program in past years to do other bridges, and this is really the last bridge, when I complete my asset management for bridges, oh, this is kind of good, because our bridges are all really in good shape now. This would be the last one, Witten Neck was done recently, College Road, so those are a couple of other ones in Bay Street. So this is a good project for us, and I just wanted to see if anyone had any questions about it.
Well, I always have questions about the wetlands there, and I'm hoping that you can do as minimal an impact, because that's a marsh that's very important to the health of Lake Wentworth. The bridge needs to be fixed.
Right, and just so you're aware, I think we've talked to the abutters, and we will be going back, we're still negotiating the right-of-way construction easements, and the wetlands permits, we think we're all done, but every, when you get to the last minute, there's another question, so that hasn't been finalized, so we're continuing to complete that this year. But it will be a temporary road, will go out into the wetlands, and then we will cover those wetlands, but protect them, and that temporary, then we can do the bridge really quickly, and then put the road back. So that'll be the least impact, it'll be some temporary impacts, but those wetlands are really rugged, so when we take care of them, we'll put fabric down, put the gravels on top, build a single-lane road across the Brook, and have a lights, so it'll be one-lane light, so it'll be, it'll be a delay for all the people that enter Pleasant Valley Road. But the option is, if we don't do anything, that bridge could go, and then we'd all be in trouble, because there's no way to get out beyond that point unless you use the Class 6 roads coming from other towns.
Yeah, yeah, long trip and not very pleasant. Does anybody else have any questions about this?
No, I'm just pleased to see this thing moving along, you know, nice and fast, you know, by, like you said upfront there, getting this engineering done first, helps, puts this right in line to move up, and it's definitely showing here, so that was definitely a good move.
And well, I've notified the Planning Board, the CIP, so that in the process, we'll come back, because it was 2026, we're going to move it up the list, so again, hopefully the CIP committee will agree with us that it's ready to go. So we did, we did talk about it, they should be aware, too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Museum Loop, and Alena Oldby, fill us in on this.
Sure. Yes, I'm Alana Oldby, the Director of the Libby Museum, and I just wanted to update the selectmen on the new initiative coming up this summer called the Museum Loop. Essentially, all of the museums in town have decided to coordinate together to organize, to have the Libby come to the Libby Museum, and the trolley to come back to town, so that's the Libby Loop section of the Museum Loop, and for the trolley, for passengers on that, to also have a all-day museum pass for traveling on the trolley around town. They will also get a free pass to the Boat Museum for $33 an adult and $12 a child. We're going to test it out at, on Friday mornings in July and August, and then we'll see how we do, whether the Boat Museum, and Molly the Trolley, and the Clark, and the Wright Museum want to expand that going forward to other days. We're doing joint advertising, including brochures and posters, and thanks to the Granite State for putting the article in about it. We'll have more articles in the newspaper about it, but it's part of the promotion of Wolfboro as a museum destination.
Fantastic.
Awesome.
Is it going to start at any particular place, or you could pick it up, I could go do my boat ride, then go to the Libby and take the trolley back in to see, let's say, the Wright Museum, is there any kind of sequence you have to do it in?
The only sequence you have to do it in is to start at the docks in the morning by either trolley or boat, and return in the opposite means of transport, so you get one boat ride and one trolley ride.
Okay.
But the rest of it, you can do at your leisure throughout the day.
Okay, so the loop is really the boat and the trolley to the Libby Museum and back?
That's right, but we wanted to make sure the other museums were part of-
Yep.
-the initiative. Okay. I do have a small request, and I'm not quite sure if it's for the selectmen, but we would like to put the poster about the Museum Loop up on the signboard outside of the Chamber of Commerce. And last year, when I approached the Chamber to use that post, that board, I was told that it was a decision of the town.
Are you talking about where the map is?
Yeah.
I don't think there is any posters allowed in there.
There are no posters, okay.
No.
Fine, thank you.
But I'm sure the Chamber would take one.
Sure, sure.
Coffee shops everywhere.
They'll be everywhere.
Everywhere.
Including public toilets, which we framed them so that the dampness doesn't affect them, but it actually works very nicely.
Alana, will you give me a call next week? I want to talk to you about just some museum things, nothing controversial, just some ideas.
Okay.
Does any other board of selectmen have any comment they want to make?
Congratulations, that's a wonderful idea.
I'll just say that Alana, also, we talked about this at the Friends of Libby Museum meetings, too, and stuff, and everybody there is definitely, you know, very excited about this, too, and stuff, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a great idea and a great, great thing to undertake.
Okay, well, thank you for all your time and energy you put into that museum, it is growing.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Owen.
While Alana's still here, she made me aware today that Priscilla Griffin, who's the great-great-granddaughter of Dr. Libby, her husband passed away recently, and we thought it would be a nice touch for the board of selectmen to send a sympathy card, so we've got it all made out for your signatures.
Okay, everybody agree?
Yep.
Sounds good. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Next item on the agenda, it's town elections. I've done some analysis on that, and the warrant article that got the most number of votes was the electric 390 line, because everybody likes their electricity. The one that was the least was, and the, was, electric line was 93.7%, and the one that got the least was the Bay Street sidewalk, it's 65.4%, all the rest of them were either in the 90s, 80s, or high 70, or in the 70s, except for the election of the ZBA, and that was 68.90. There were 5,801 on the checklist, and so we had 1,219, so it was about 21% of the people on the checklist came out to vote. And those are the ones I kind of picked out. Board members, Paul, any you want to pick out?
I, you know, we were all, had some interest one way or another in the library, and I think that's a substantial vote of confidence in, in the library, you know, folks were finger-crossed for a 60% number, and clearly well beyond that. The hard work now has to begin, which sounds like it begins in earnest with looking at energy issues for the library, as well as getting the construction discussions underway, so congratulations to the library and to the people who came out during that lovely day to vote for it.
Brad?
Yeah, I'd just make a comment, too, you know, I think that, you know, the results overall, for everything being so, you know, overwhelmingly in support, that, you know, goes to show the amount of work, and it is appreciated, I think, by all the department heads, you know, not just, you know, Public Works is the bulk of these and stuff, but you've got the library in there, you know, obviously, the electric department, you know, you've got the, the planning board articles in there, too, and stuff, and just, I think it just goes to show that the town has a lot of confidence in all of our departments and everything, and it shows it, all the hard work they're doing, and the town's appreciating it, so I thought that was very, felt very good to see that.
Dave, do you have any comments?
I think this is probably the most non-controversial warrant article approval we had in Wolfboro history, at least in my memory, and the capital improvement project, the library, which was just mentioned, I have not, I'm, I'm audit the library as a selectman, I have not heard any, did not hear any negative comments at all, no one wrote anything adverse in the Granite State News, and I think that's unique for a capital project in Wolfboro history, but I thank everybody who came out to vote, and I think all the elected officials here will do our best to further your needs and to be responsive to anything we can do.
And one of the things that I found very interesting, and I know the Budget Committee has a very hard job, and they voted in, not in favor of the Bay Street sidewalks, but it shows us that the public really is looking to have a sidewalk there, so it was good to see the voters give us direction by passing these warrant articles, so. Nice election on a snowy day.
Lovely day.
Okay. Town manager's search. On March 14th, the board and the two interview panels conducted interviews with five town manager candidates. One candidate could not make it in because of the storm, and after rescheduling that person, that person decided to withdraw, withdraw his application. The two panels and the board of selectmen all picked the two top candidates. On March 16th, the board interviewed the two finalists, all selectmen agreed on the candidate to be the next new town manager. MRI sent out a notice of conditional offer of employment to the board's pick. That offer has the following condition, the board successfully negotiates an employment contract with the candidate, the completion of an in-depth background check, background check, and medical clearance. On March 19th, the board received the signed notice of conditional offer of employment. As soon as the employment contract is signed and all the conditions of employment are met, we will announce the candidate. That'll probably take us two to three weeks, the background check will be the thing that'll take us the longest, so we're moving along on that front. Okay, is there any old business? Any other business? I have one, and I would like the board to send a thank-you letter to the public work staff. This is the second time they've been out on Election Day, they've kept our sidewalks clear, they kept our roads so the voters could get in, and I think this winter, they have done an outstanding job with our roads. In that storm, it was very greasy, we had some problems with trucks staying on the road- on the road, and I think at the end of the winter, it's nice to personally thank each one of those members who are out there. Does the board...
They took some of us home, including me and Pat Waterman, people that live out in the sticks.
Yes, it, it, it's really important to us when we're on Election Day, and also to the public. Is everybody in agreement we send that, those letters?
Absolutely.
And I think all of us as board members would like to sign them, and it go out individually to each of the employees, Dave?
Yes, I can arrange that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Does anybody else have any other business? Okay, Mr. Owen, town managers' report.
Just a few things, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to report that Wes Smallidge was approved for light duty by his doctor, and he has returned to driving-only duties at the Public Works Department this week. He'll be working like two or three days a week and just doing light, you know, delivery kinds of work.
Welcome back.
So that's, that's very good news. Also, we have a new electric lineman that started with the electric department this week. His name is Paul Granger, and he, he came to us from the Holden, Massachusetts Electric Utility. So he started on Monday. Your reorganization of meeting, of course, has been postponed to the first meeting in April, April 4th, because there's not a full board here this evening. And I'm sure the, the board's aware that the town prevailed in the Christina Fay case with the 17 counts that she was found guilty of. The town, of course, was represented there at the trial by a member of the town council's firm, and in your manifest this evening, you've got a pretty substantial legal bill, and about $9,000 of that is due to the Christina Fay case. So I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Might we get back from Christina, because I know that we had other expenses.
Pardon?
Well, might we get back from, from her, because, you know, we had an expense, various expenses with the, our various departments. Will we get anything back? Are we putting in a claim?
There, there was a, a small amount that the town was supposed to be reimbursed in the court, in the judge's decision at the lower court level. I'm not certain at the Superior Court. Are we still getting all the... Do you want to address the board? Mark, thank you.
Yeah, Captain Mark Libby. We're just waiting for, the verdict did come out on 17 of the charges, or even sweep, and the reimbursement. So our reimbursement to the town, I believe, was 18 or 20,000?
I thought it was 16.
Oh, 16, okay. So it was in that general ballpark. And there's plenty more on the other. I think it's a total of 1.1 mil.
Then in addition, the zoning case is, the zoning enforcement case is coming up shortly in the court later this, later this month, I think. And of course, we're looking for, you know, financial penalties payable to the town there also. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Owen.
Okay. I'm going to start down here. And Paul, you've just been sworn in, so I'm sure you haven't gone to any committee meetings. Brad?
Yeah, we had a, last night we had a planning board meeting. It's a fairly light agenda. We had a one-three lot subdivision up on Beach Pond Road, and then we also had two lot mergers in town here to do. And we finished out the night having a, working on a master plan, you know, kind of a work session, organizational-type meeting, and, you know, really, committees are pretty much put together, so those are going to start meeting very shortly, and it's going to be a busy summer with the master plan production there. We have a Friends of Libby Museum meeting last Thursday, and then we have a Wolfboro Community TV meeting next Tuesday, so that's it.
Dave, do you have anything to report?
I audited the library, and as did everybody else, interviewed the various candidates, and sort of a busy week last week with the election. A good week, and I think everything came out well.
EDC, I went to the EDC meeting.
I went to the EDC meeting too, thank you. Linda and I are both, we audit the EDC, but we're, we're not, we're actually members, but we're only one member, so if Linda's there and I'm not, she votes and vice versa.
I attended the, I master plan committee meeting. I'm on the community facilities chapter, and I'm on that with Dave Senical, and he also was at that meeting. They're going to start, I'm going to go tomorrow. We're going to look at the facilities downtown. I think the week after that, they're heading out to the wastewater treatment plant, and we're going to view all the facilities prior to working on that chapter. I was with Dave at the EDC meeting. I would like to kind of run down last week, all board members spent all day Tuesday at the elections, all day Wednesday interviewing. We had Thursday off, and then we spent the afternoon on Friday interviewing the last two candidates. So it was a very full week for us. Paul O'Brien was not sworn in at the time, but he did join us at those meetings. So thank you, Paul, for coming.
Thank you for including me, I appreciate it.
The other, I went to the Route 28 Forum on South Main Street. We looked at the areas of the public safety building and the hospital. We talked about the high school intersection. We talked about Pleasant Valley Road and the Middleton Road intersection. We had a fair turnout. We had the people who were affected by those intersections there. There were not as many as when we did Pickering Corner. And I do want to point out, and Mr. Ford is here, he has sent, he sent the first letter to New Hampshire DOT in August requesting that the speed limit go from 40 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour. And, and maybe you can explain from where you're looking at that. One says Walts Road, I'm not quite sure where it is. Then he got a letter back from the state on March 1st saying they were busy and didn't know when they'd get here, and then he followed up with a March 8th letter, trying to push them again to deal with this. So you want to do a little explaining? I think the public might like to know it.
Sure. The, as you're coming into town on South Main Street and approaching Pleasant Valley Road, on your right-hand side, Walts Lane is a private lane that goes down to Russ Pond. In that vicinity, the speed limit goes from a 30, which is around Middleton Road corner. There's a cautionary 10-mile speed limit, which has been advisable, as we talked to a lot of residents there, that a lot of people do crazy things at that intersection. And probably the only reason we haven't had a fatality there is because it's so bad, people do go slow enough. So when people do stupid things, there's reaction times and no one gets killed. As you go from the 30 to the 40, as you're coming up the hill, that 40 extends all the way until you get to almost 0-mil drive, except, this is where it gets complicated, when school's in session, and then we have a flashing 30 mile an hour. But the school is only in session, you know, in the morning and the afternoon at those times, and, but we still have heavy traffic using the golf course, and we have thousands of crossings a day, excuse me, per, per summer there, and we have a lot of other residential and businesses and institutions in that corridor. So we requested that we reduce the speed limit to 30 all the way through, and then have the flashing be a 25 when school's in session. And in true New Hampshire DOT fashion, they have to do a study, and they just can't award these things. So, and it's beyond my, I don't understand traffic studies, so they have to do something about speeds. But I tried to remind them that the DOT has a motto, which is "Driving Towards Zero," and, and their goal is to, is to reduce deaths on the highway to zero. And while that's probably not attainable, it's, it's a good goal, and I think we should all have that goal. And, and the difference in speed, the difference between 30 miles an hour and 40 miles an hour is really significant. We had a conference for engineers two weeks ago, and they did a presentation. If you're struck at 30 miles an hour versus 40 miles an hour, your chance of dying goes from 20% to 80%. So there's almost a 60% increase because of that speed. And, and again, we always say, oh, no one's going to follow that speed limit. Well, if your speed limit's 40, then a lot of people are traveling 50, and that's when it gets really dangerous and it's careful. But we really, we're saying 30, and the difference over that period of time is going to be less than a half a minute. And it's really something that, you know, we want people to come to Wolfboro, we want them to enjoy Wolf, enjoy the beauty, and we want them to slow down, because we do need to make it safe. One of the things we found out in the Route 28 study is, there's a lot of solutions, but they don't really fit Wolfboro. The context of Wolfboro, we're trying to do this context-sensitive solutions. We're trying to get our, our traffic to make it safe here, but we only have really one major route coming in and one going out. So we have to live with that, and I think the, the key is, if we can slow traffic down, that will bring safety back in, so we don't have to maybe spend millions of dollars on traffic lights or maybe roundabouts, if we can just get traffic to slow down, continue to work together. So I think I tried to express that in the memo, and, and also, they were there at our meeting Wednesday night, so that was really good. Bill Lambert was there, as well as some of the engineers are going to be working on a 10-year plan. So again, we're pushing hard for that project to, to move forward, and we want to be involved in it, and I'm glad you did bring that out, because again, I think a lot of people are supportive of that. And again, just remind everyone that if you're going that little extra slower, the difference is very significant, because it deals with your peripheral vision, your reaction time, and really the safety of our people. And we are trying to encourage biking and walking in our downtown area. So again, I hopefully, and then this is also supported, I volunteered our police to make sure they would enforce that. And I said, I said, I'm sure we would, that we'd get out there with our lights, and, and again, once we, you know, because you've got to enforce it, and we've got to have to be hard on it. Some people are going to get those speed limits, we're doing 10 miles over 30 miles an hour. They go, oh, we're only doing 40. We've got to enforce that, get that mindset, and hopefully DOT agrees with us, so we can make these changes and make our gateway safe.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Questions from the press? Okay, public input. Can I have a motion to go into non-public session?
No move.
Second.
Dave?
No move, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.